Good evening. We are going to go ahead and call the meeting of the City of Bloomington Township to order. If everyone could stand for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Bowlin?
Here.
Trustee Montney?
Here.
Trustee Danenberger?
Here.
Trustee Becker?
Here.
Trustee Hendricks?
Here.
Trustee Warren?
Here.
Trustee Crumpler?
Here.
Trustee Milowambay?
Here. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, motion by trustee Bowlin?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Crumpler.
You punch harder.
That's okay. Oh, there it went. Got it.
Okay, awesome. The consent agenda, no need to announce. And now we're going to move on to the regular agenda, a discussion and an ordinance for compensation for the township's elected officials, including the township board of trustees as requested by the City of Bloomington Township. Did you want to make some initial comments?
I was just going to make the initial. Next month, the trustees will be voting on the compensation for the elected positions for the next four years. These positions are for the township supervisor, the assessor, and for the board of trustee. The proposal that was presented in October will reflect the cost of living adjustments for salaries is what we were going to put in. If you're putting in something different, then we need to just have that ahead of time.
Okay, looks like trustee Ward? Oh, you have your light on.
Okay, who, well, let me start first by saying, so I did send out, Deb, some of the information, resent it that you had submitted to to the board of trustees for consideration, so wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. I do believe in that information. Let me see, I'm trying to see if I can pull that up here. Where we go? You probably know that by hard, Deb. But since when, when was the last time there was an increase in the, it has remained the same for?
For eight years.
For eight years, okay. That's what I thought I remembered.
However, to be fair, cost of living adjustments for years 2017 through 20 or year end, so fiscal year 2018 through 21, where the cost of living adjustment, CPI, was still less than what we were making. However, in the next term is when the cost of living skyrocketed for several years. So those numbers that are in the CPI, the first column, show that our positions as township elected officials, the positions themselves should be at 106,440 is what it's saying. And so what we're looking for is for these positions to be brought up to where they are providing cost of living adjustments for the positions themselves.
Okay, and let me also remind everyone that this is really not about the individuals that we have in front of us. It's about it's about the positions themselves.
Just, and maybe I'm just asking this question, and I really don't know. Is the proposed ordinance comparable with other elected positions around central Illinois? I mean, in terms of what, you know, what kinds of increases other folks in similar positions are getting?
Just to give you an example of a smaller township, Limestone Township, just got a 31% increase plus 3% increase for the next three years following because they weren't up to cost of living adjustments.
So it would be fair to say that this is something that maybe is a system-wide effort on some?
I can't speak for that, though, trustee Crumpler. I don't know the answer.
Thank you.
I just know, and I can explain where we're at here, that the recent cost of living adjustments for social security have been for 2024, 3.2%, 23, 8.7%, 22, 5.9%, and 21, 1.3%.
Thank you.
Trustee Bowlin?
Yeah, I went online and tried to find some information about the salaries in Illinois, the average salaries in Illinois, and I don't know what their, you know, workload is, but they list here Decatur as $64,000. Now, I'm not sure if that also includes the benefits, but that's what's listed listed here, and of course, they have several others. Even Chicago, township in Chicago is 67. And again, I don't know if that has to do with benefits. Again, this is not directed at you, but the entire community is having to deal with the inflation and the increased cost of living and, you know.
Do you want to speak to them?
Many of them are at median income, which is more like $67,000. So I just, you know, we need to have some more discussion. I'd like to hear what other people have to say. If the increase takes place from, what is it, 94 right now, up to 107 or 108, it would be a $14,000 increase. So, I mean, I'm just putting the numbers out there.
We're comparable to normal in the salaries, and normal was below us by almost 14,000, I believe. Normal was a lot lower, and then Bloomington stopped, and now normal has exceeded what Bloomington's paying for the same township officials.
So what is the salary in normal?
I don't have those numbers in front of me.
What is the salary in normal?
I don't have their numbers in front of me, but I could find.
Well, I can, you know, I can look that up too for comparison.
Correct. But that's what typically, I think we've compared us to normal in Peoria, not necessarily Decatur.
Okay.
But Champagne, I think, was one of them.
Champagne is similar, but the person that works that position does a different job entirely. They're more transitional assistants, so they pay cash out to welfare assistance recipients. And so what I'm comparing ourselves to is Rock Island, which is, or sorry, Rockford, which is a higher-paying position as well. And we're very similar in what we do for township supervisor position. Assessor is similar in the sense that the number of parcels is 27,000, and for what we do is based on population, which has grown increasingly over the past eight years.
Well, I think the other thing to consider too is whether or not, and I know this is, it's a little bit different from your typical hiring interview and that kind of thing, because it's an elected position. But I'm thinking about it in terms of the assessor's position, which requires, you know, specific certifications and things like that. So we have to consider whether or not, you know, the salary is a consideration in terms of attracting
Qualified individuals.
Qualified individuals, yes. So just something to think about. Trustee Montney?
Sure, just a few questions. First of all, just following up on council trustee Crumpler's question. In the example you gave of the venue that had the significant increase, what is their actual salary in that township?
For which one? Rockford?
No, the one that you mentioned having the significant increase.
He's a smaller township, and it's kind of a village. It's $65,000 starting, and then 3% after that each year.
Thank you on that. Thank you very much. Can you share with me the history of when the John M. Scott moved out of the township and how that impacted the salaries at that time, if it did?
I'm here bringing up. The John M. Scott was done as a stipend when it should not have been. Every amount of all monies that came from that should have come through the township, not through a salary to the township supervisor. The township supervisor, by law, is required to have a salary set by the township. And so when that was brought to the attention in 2017, that is when there was a $0 increase for the township supervisor position and the assessor. That salary, that stipend supposedly was just to meet the parity of the assessor, but the job didn't change. The job for the township supervisor was what it is today. The additional work of administrating the John M. Scott was additional work.
And last question, just in terms of the comparison to the staff, what would be the salary of the highest-paid staff member?
$70,000.
Thank you.
No, on the assessor's side, it's $80,000.
Okay, thank you.
And we've lost some employees that were above $80,000 due to retirement and moving on to the county position.
And their positions have been increased due to cost of living adjustments each year.
When you say their positions, who?
Their salaries. Our staff has been taken care of because of cost of living adjustments and merit adjustments and some. So, and there was longevity in that as well, so.
And I should know this, but just remind me the average hours in office in each of their respective positions each week?
Yeah, it should be 37.5.
Well, it's 37.5 unless we're in deadlines and we're pushing to get work done. Sometimes it's a little longer. Sometimes we get a, an average is 37.5.
Thank you.
Okay, so just kind of looking at the chart here to make sure we all understand where this is. So right now, you're at 96? Is it 96?
The assessor's position is 96, and the supervisor position is 94.
94, okay, sorry. And then, so adding 2%, which would be CPI, right? Because you have a 2% change here.
That was for just this year, should have been, 2.2%.
I'm just trying to understand the chart here.
I just started with what it should be considered to, the cost of living adjustment there. I say should be, but that's what the cost of living adjustment calculations indicated.
So the choices before us really would be either?
The choices we're presenting are the CPI, cost of living adjustments, the 2.5% or the 3%.
And then to follow that throughout the term.
I'm sorry?
And to follow those adjustments throughout the whole term, the next term, so that there isn't a bump in salary by a whole bunch, but a growth year over year of the 4,000.
Every year, 2.5%, is that what you're, or are you saying 2.5% and then?
Well, part of the issue is that the adjustments aren't being made annually. So you're seeing a depleted cost of living or a decrease in salary compared to cost of living. So what we're trying to do is bring it up to par for the position based on what the cost of living adjustments and inflation have dictated, just like similarly to elected officials and/or directors of the city or the county. Those positions have been brought up to similar cost of living adjustments and inflation adjustments. The positions of the township have not.
Just as a point of information, I was just trying to find normal township since it was said that we try to be comparable. I see as May 1st, 2024, the supervisor was $83,000, and then they did do a pension contribution of $3,700 for a total of $86,000. The assessor, on the other hand, the salary of May 1st, 2024 was $104,000, and after benefits was $127,000. So just not making a statement just since it was talked about.
Okay, thank you. Any else? So what? So we have to go with a number, right?
Well, you would have to come up with numbers before the next board packet goes out.
Before the next board packet goes out.
I'm not saying they have to be done today, but unless you want to extend it past the date that we all meet together and have special meetings again, like we had done one time in the past, then that would be an inconvenience to the board to do that. So that's why we picked October 28th, which is our next meeting.
Is there, does anybody want to consider a number today or want to wait till the next meeting? Bring up?
Maybe I'm wrong, but I'm looking at the gin, and I thought this was for discussion purposes only. There was no action required.
We can't vote on anything today. But you can recommend what you would want to put in the packet for the increases, if you would like, and then we would put them in the packet.
Is this something where we can have a date to have our feelings into our leader of the trustee board? I was going to say mayor, but not technically in this capacity.
I need to remind you that we're part of Open Meetings Act, so you need to do that as you see fit. One to two people at a time, kind of.
Yeah, I just meant if the mayor calls and says, how are you feeling on this topic? I wasn't suggesting to bring any laws.
To trustee Milowambay to get that to us, it would have to be done by the week, the Monday before the board packets go out, so I can get that number for that date for you. Get to October. So the board meeting would be October 28th, so it would be best to have it by the 21st or 22nd of October.
Let's do that. It seems like people still want to do more thinking.
Before we move on to the reports, I just wanted to mention that we had no, we had received no public comment. We kind of just jumped right past that. So no email public comment, nobody registered to speak at this particular meeting. And then also, on the consent agenda, when we displayed the vote, it didn't actually show trustee Milowambay. It's on a second screen, and that wasn't shown, but he did vote positively to pass that. So just wanted to point that out for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So let's move forward to reports then.
My report is pretty lean this month. I do want to note that we are seeing an uptick in general assistance applicants. The problem is that there are 60 pending. They still need to bring paperwork in for us to be able to see them. So we're doing the best we can to get them to bring the paperwork in. That's all I have.
We're working on assessments to get them turned into the county. We made a lot of adjustments again this year. We're still seeing increases in sales prices. So we're expecting a lot of increases in assessments. If we don't meet the criteria the county's looking for in the adjustments, they'll add a multiplier to the whole township. We use a three-year average of sales prices towards assessments to adjust those values. And in the state of Illinois, the value, market value of the home divided by three is what your assessed value should be. And I encourage anyone who gets an assessment that they don't agree with the market value of their property to file a complaint with the board review at the county, and I'll give you those rules next month.
All right, questions? Okay, no questions. So is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, motion by trustee Bowlin, second by trustee Hendricks. All those in favor saying five by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, five minutes. Okay, five minutes. Okay, good evening. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the meeting of the City of Bloomington Council. If everyone could stand, if able, and say the pleasure of allegiance, and then we will have a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which is founded on a vision.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please call the role?
Councilmember Bowden.
Here.
Councilmember Montney.
Here.
Councilmember Danenberger.
Here.
Councilmember Becker.
Here.
Councilmember Hendricks.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Here.
Mayor Melo Wambay.
Here. We're gonna move on to recognition and appointments. And the first one, this one is a recognition of residents who have recently obtained United States citizenships as requested by the Administration Department. And I am going to turn it over to Mr. Michael Hurt with some initial comments.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. We just came off of a very successful welcoming week. We had lots of entities in town, put on various events in celebration of welcoming week. What we have done traditionally is at the end of that week, we like to bring in our new citizens, new citizens who have lost that former immigration status. And now they've become citizens of the United States and they have chosen to become residents of the City of Bloomington. We haven't seen Mr. Bayo as yet, but we're going to start the evening with Hannah Misswani. She's gonna tell us her story about her journey to immigration, through immigration, to citizenship, to residency here in Bloomington. Ladies and gentlemen, Hannah Misswani.
Thank you, merci bien. I appreciate that. I also appreciate you pronouncing my name correctly because that doesn't happen very often. So I was born and raised in Morocco, which is in northwest Africa. It is an Arab Middle Eastern country. Most people hear me say Monaco like Grace Kelly in race cars, but I had neither growing up. Gotta take the photo op when they can get them. It took me seventeen years to become a citizen in the United States. And so that is seventeen years of never knowing if I was able to plant roots in this country or not. Seventeen years of having to maintain a three point five GPA to maintain the scholarships that I had. Seventeen years of not pursuing friendships or relationships because you never knew if you were gonna get deported for being LGBTQ or for being Muslim. Seventeen years of paying taxes, always paying taxes. Knowing that there was a strong likelihood if I didn't become a citizen, I wouldn't get to ever see social security, for example. Seventeen years of being taxed on scholarships. So it's like being given a crutch and then having someone kick that crutch out from under you. And this is all done the legal way. And so when I hear awful horrible things said about immigrants, it takes me back to every moment of those seventeen years when I couldn't get a job, when I couldn't get housing, when we literally like Blanche Dubois in A Streetcar Named Desire, I told you all I was clear, we had to depend on the kindness of strangers. One of my favorite poems, and I won't do the whole thing, is says that no one leaves home unless home is the mouth of a shark. You only run for the border when you see the whole city running as well. Immigrants come to this country, yes, because it is the land of opportunity, and I'm thrilled to be American. However, I'm also heartbroken that I could not be Moroccan because it's my culture, it's where I'm from, it's in the fabric of my DNA. But it's a country like our very own Mez that has been decimated by colonization, where opportunities aren't afforded to either of our families back home because of a worldwide legacy that extends beyond this room. And so when I hear people talk about how I may or may not eat cats and dogs, I don't, I'm vegan. It's maddening and infuriating, and I want to sit folks down and tell them about not just my last seventeen years, but the decades that folks have been waiting for citizenship because, to paraphrase the poem continuing on, no one puts their children in a boat unless the ocean is safer than the land. And so we have a fantastic community here. I genuinely love living here. Because of the community that each of y'all bring, I see the passion for making this a space that people can call home regardless of where they come from. But when those insidious cracks start forming in terms of who we welcome and how we do or do not choose to welcome, it does make me want to get back on the proverbial boat. It was a plane, shout out to Continental Airlines. Because I wonder if immigrants will ever have a feeling of home because we also dislocate. But as somebody with immense privilege, I have fantastic friends sitting up there. I have a family that I get to finally plant the roots that I've been holding on to, hoping that they will take. And so the fact that there even is this session to honor that immigrants are welcome here, the fact that welcoming week was a raging success does give me a little bit of hope. So I ask that you hold on to that hope and know that we're not all scary. I have cats and dogs that I love very much. They're very well. They live a better life than I do some days, but that's how it goes. I ask you to share a little bit of the love that you've created in this space for other immigrants because we're really just trying to call this home. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are we? Well, thank you very much for sharing your story, Hannah. It just brings to life some of the the issues that immigrants do face when they come here, but you're also a story of success, so certainly inspiring for many, many here in this community. We're gonna move on to a public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have public comment?
We do. We received emailed public comment from Monsignor Jason Gray that was emailed out to a council earlier today. And then we also have five people registered to speak. We will start with Monsignor Gray first and to follow Matt Har after you read your statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time seized.
Okay, thank you very much. So my name is Monsignor Jason Gray.
Sorry, is the microphone working?
Okay, I'm curious that it is. We'll see if that's better.
Yes, much better.
I am Monsignor Jason Gray. I'm here on behalf of the Bishop Tilka of the Diocese of Peoria, speaking on Holy Trinity, an opposition to the S four overlay that is on the regular agenda. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and also for the opportunity to present the letter, which I I did send in as part of public comment. I just make a few comments here. One is that the S four overlay imposes some burdens. And if you haven't read section forty four dash eight oh four of the city code, I I did go through to read that to see what was involved in the S four overlay. And as I read through that, it was really terrifying to me, the prerogatives that can be exercised. I understand in speaking with the Historical Preservation Commission that they work collaboratively, but that's quite a significant amount of power that they wield, and it's for that reason that I represent the property owner in opposing that application. In addition to that, I, when I read that, it also tells me that the city is saying to the property owner, we don't trust you to manage your own property. And in that sense, I think it puts the Diocese of Peoria and the City of Bloomington in an adversarial position, and I would not recommend that. I know that during the zoning commission, there was a discussion about the grants that could be could be awarded. It's a very small amount of money that really would not make a big difference at all. It's less than one tenth of one percent of the expenses that would be involved in the repair of the church. And also during the presentation itself, I know Sarah Lindembach made a comment about a tax-exempt benefit which does not accrue to the church, which is which is already tax-exempt. I speak on behalf of the parish which is committed to its church, to its property. The Diocese of Peoria stands with the people of Holy Trinity in serving the people on the west side of Peoria in their dedication to the service to the poor, which the parishioners are very supportive of. And they are committed very much to their church, to their property, and are in fact even now dedicated to raising the funds to sustain the church. So the church is not being torn down and no one's anticipating that. So I ask you just not to stand in the way of the work of the parishioners of Holy Trinity and the people of the city by imposing a burden that would make life more difficult for them. So I thank you for your time.
Next?
Next up will be Matt Har and then to follow Greg Kuss.
Mayor Moambui, city council members, city managers and directors. I'm Matt Har and I have the privilege of being the principal of North Point Elementary School. I want to share my appreciation for the Bloomington Parks and Recreation Department. The park team that works on planning and installation have collaborated with me as planning is being done on a possible refresh of the North Point Park. Especially, I would like to thank Jeff and Dave as they've had many calls and emails from me during this process. We have approximately five hundred students that play on the park daily during the school year. This includes many students with special needs. The team has allowed me to give input and share ideas on the park and be part of the process. On behalf of North Point School, I would like to say thank you. These improvements will have a positive impact on so many students every day and families for from years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next up is Greg Kuss and then to follow will be Grant Walsh.
I'm Greg Kuss, past chair of the Bloomington Historic Preservation Commission. This particular nomination came to the commission when I was chair, and it came to us by the parishioners at Holy Trinity. We did not select this as a specific kind of a project. We were asked by citizens of the city and by members of the parish to address the question of, is this a Bloomington historic landmark? And we found that it indeed. And we found that it indeed was, and remains to be. And we are confident that the parish and the diocese will work together to continue to preserve it. There's not a question about that. The question is, is that do we give a recognition that goes perhaps beyond the current generation that goes into the future? Because we need to preserve for the future. That's future generations, that's people who succeed us in our various roles. So I encourage you to work by voting to preserve this building and to honor it and to recognize it through zoning it S4. It's the power that the city has, it's a zoning matter, and this would not be the first time the city ever zoned something with owner disapproval. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next up is Grant Walsh, and then last will be Serena Fish.
Thank you. I'm short enough, I don't have to raise it up. My name is Grant Walsh, I live in Ward 1, and I've got three things to talk about for this evening. Two of them are on the consent agenda. One of them is Consent Agenda Item 7F, and that is authorizing the city to do $138,500,000 in bonds. Okay? And this is something that it's for the water project, which is very, very important. I think we can all agree, that particular item is incredibly important. We need to spend the money, we need to upgrade our water system. But we don't need to hide $138 million in bonds on a consent agenda. I think it should be pulled out of the consent agenda, and I think it needs to be voted on as a regular agenda item with an opportunity for council members to speak instead of only bringing up their concerns and their thoughts in three-on-one meetings. The second item is 7G, and that's for the $21 million for public works at the former Owens Nursery property. We just brought that property in June. And so I'm kind of questioning, have we had time to do full architectural work on that property? Have we had a full engineering review of that property that we're already talking about how much money we're going to be spending there? It seems like a very short amount of time for how much work would need done there for that property. And I, for one, would like to see a much greater plan of what's going to happen with that property before we say, let's just start tossing more money into it. It's something I deal with at work all the time, and it's something I would like for the council to think about here of be the turtle. In The Tortoise and the Hare, the tortoise won the race every time. A hare going full speed ahead never wins the race, it doesn't matter how you read the story. So for that particular thing, pull it out of the consent agenda, take a step back, let's be the tortoise, before we just start throwing only $21 million at it. We suspect it's going to be more. The last one is the designation for Holy Trinity and the property there. I'm concerned that while parishioners went to the Historic Preservation Committee and asked for this, the property owner did not. And what kind of thing are we looking at here where we're saying it's okay for government to turn around and start designating property without the owner saying, yes, this is something I want? And so think about that as you move forward with your votes on that, please. Thank you.
Next up, we have Serena Fish.
Good evening. Basically, I'm going to agree with Grant. I think the two items, the G and the, was it F? It's a lot of money. And I think they should be pulled, and they should be presented, one item at a time, with a lot more information for the public, more information on how the dollars are going to be spent. It's a lot of money. And people need to realize, when we spend this money, your water bill will be possibly going up by 33%. So I would like to have both of them pulled, and more in talking and presenting an item by item in the next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this takes us to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to-
I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt for just a second. We were going to discuss items 7D and 7E on the consent agenda. I could discuss them if you'd like, or there's... So if you'd permit me to move forward.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see that part. Okay. All right, yes, go ahead and do that, yes.
So I'll just read a statement really quickly. So I'd like to note that there were Scrivener's errors associated to one of the addresses in Items 7D and 7E is the following item. The errors are in 7D. The address read 2540 West Washington Street. It should have read 2405 West Washington Street. The errors were Scrivener errors, they were only found on the memo and in the title of the proposed ordinance, but they are not in the body of the ordinance, nor were they associated to any of the notice that was provided, the petition that was attached, or any of the other documents. So because of the other documents all being appropriate addresses and the notice being appropriate that was provided to the community, we are recommending that they continue to move forward. Again, that was just with 7D, but 7D and 7E have to go hand-in-hand together. So if we could, when, if you decide to move for approval of the consent agenda, if you can do it in consideration of that address amendment.
Okay. So the motion is the consent agenda, approve the consent agenda as?
With 7D as amended.
Yeah.
Unless there's other items that might be pulled, it looks like there might be.
All right. Yes.
I'd like to pull 7C, just for a comment.
Okay, 7C, okay, sounds good.
I'll make a motion to approve the-
I had one to-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. I'd like to pull 7G, just for a little discussion regarding that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 7C-
And 7-
And 7G.
Okay. And also 7D as amended.
And the considerations of the-
7D.
Of the-
7D as amended. If that's okay.
Yes, that's-
Thank you. And that was the second Hendrix. Okay, thank you. And we'll vote. You want to just call it Councilmember Bowlin?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, the item passes, no nays to announce. Now we're going to turn it over to Councilmember Ward.
I'll move approval of 7C.
Second.
Yeah, I just wanted to be able to comment on this. I want to congratulate North Point Elementary School on the playground, but I also want to say thank you to the residents of Ward 7 who advocated for the playground equipment to be replaced on the north side of White Oak Park. This is a playground that had been vandalized many, many years ago and left kids on that side of the park with a very long walk in order to get to any kind of playground equipment. And so it's really nice to see both of those projects moving to completion. So that's all I had to say.
Okay, so we had a motion by Councilmember Ward and a second by Councilmember Hendrix. Vote.
It's going to be one of those nights, I guess.
Yes.
Yes, for you, okay. Okay, so how about I just do a quick call? Just, we'll be good. Councilmember Bowlin? She said yes earlier, yes?
Yes.
Yeah. Montney? Councilmember Dannerberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
It's a Monday, the clickers are slow, everybody's slow.
It's always a Monday.
Yeah. Okay, so now we're going to move on to Item 7G. Councilmember Montney?
So thank you very much, and first I'd just like to apologize to the staff for pulling this tonight and not having the opportunity to send an email to you today. I do support the Public Works move to the Owens Center. I voted for that, and I understand there's going to be costs associated with building there. That's all clear to me. What I would like to have, though, and have not yet received, is a total picture of where our debt stands right now, all in across the city. I was surprised to recently learn that while it's been about 20-plus years that we still owe $21.5 million, I believe the number is, on the Coliseum, for example. So it would just be very helpful to me if we had the opportunity in one of the finance director's updates to really get an understanding of where we are across the board with all of the debt that we currently have on the books.
Thank you. Oh, did you want to say something? Oh, okay.
And I also just want to clarify, and Finance Director Rathbun can correct me if I'm wrong, but both F and G, they are not actually approving bonds. They are setting up a process to where if we ever do issue bonds for these projects, the water projects, or for something at Owens Nursery, this will allow us to be reimbursed from some of those proceeds. So this is not actually issuing bonds or asking for the issuing of bonds. If we do that in the future, we will go through a more formal process. We'll obviously have a lot of discussion at the council level at that, but Director Rathbun, is there anything to clean up with that?
Not to get into the weeds too much, but as local government, we issue tax-exempt municipal bonds, so the IRS has a lot of regulations related to the use of those funds. And so you have to, there's only like a 60-day look-back period by the time you borrow or issue a bond and the debt or the expense that you can apply that to. So with specifically, this isn't the item here, but with the water project, we're already executing expenditures related to the water tower. We're kind of taking our time related to going out to market with those bond issuances. But without this bond reimburse, or this reimbursement resolution or ordinance, excuse me, these expenditures that we're having right now, we couldn't associate with that to the bond that we issue. Let's say we issue it next May. So in next May, if we do an issuance, you know, $30 million, whatever component of that water, we need to have this ordinance in place so that we can associate those expenditures with that bond to maintain our IRS status, so that those tax-exempt bonds stay tax-exempt. So this doesn't approve any borrowing, it doesn't approve the amounts, we can amend the amounts over time, these are just estimates at this point in time.
Thank you very much for answering that question, and I'll make a motion that we approve 7G as presented.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Montney, second by Councilmember Bowlin. Are we, try the clickers again?
We think we've got it fixed, so. Come on, Lance.
Okay, all right, it worked. Thank you. So 7G passes, no nays to announce. And now we're going to move on to the regular agenda, consideration and action on a recommendation by the Planning Commission to designate the structures of Holy Trinity Church and Holy Trinity Rectory located at 704 North Main Street as local historic landmarks, and to have the S4 Historic Preservation District overlay zoning designation applied to the subject property, including either adoption of an ordinance, approving the designation, or adoption of a resolution rejecting the designation as requested by the Historic Preservation Commission. And I am going to, so this issue presents some legal requirements that we do not often encounter, and I'm going to ask our Corporation Council to provide some background and guidance on the City Code requirements as they relate to this matter.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this to the October 14th meeting when we have a full council.
I'll second.
Okay. Do we want to vote on that?
If there's no discussion, yeah.
Did you have?
Just a quick comment. You know, I think this is a really, really important decision, and I would like to have all of our colleagues here to be able to make it, so we could really feel like we've done due diligence to this important question.
No others, so? Okay, well? Okay, so what happened there? It all changed.
So the green are yes votes, and the red are no votes.
Okay, because I saw seven blue, I'm seeing colors, seven blues and then four greens and three reds.
All right.
Okay, all right. So then postpone-
Call the nays. Councilmember Bowlin, Councilmember Becker, and Councilmember Montney.
Okay, sounds good. So the item is postponed until October 14th, is that 14?
That is correct.
Okay. We could, I mean, for whatever it's worth, but I, you could hear from Corporate Council next time, too. Yeah, so. Save some time? No, we can just wait. I think we can wait till the next time, yeah. Did you want to rehearse? No? Okay, all right, well, we'll wait till next time. Thank you. So we're going to go ahead and move to Item 8B, Consideration and Action on an Ordinance Amending the Bloomington City Code for Chapter 29, Section 197, regarding towing of vehicles as requested by the Finance Department. And I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Jeff Jurgens.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we've got an item regarding the towing of vehicles that our Finance Director, Scott Rathbun, will walk through. We've had this issue come up a few times in the past. Staff has been working on how to move the issues with some of the parking debt forward. This is really the first process in that, so with that, I turn it over to Director Rathbun. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Jurgens. Mayor, Council, you took the words out of my mouth. This is really just the first stepped, step in a process to kind of address some of this larger outstanding debt related to our parking violations. So this is a code change related to due process and how we can serve individuals that we might target for towing. So as the slide shows, you know, we have approximately $350,000 currently owed to the city. Part of that is related to a $13 charge per citation that assessed by our collections firm. We have terminated that relationship, so we're sort of bringing this debt in-house, and this is our next step as far as addressing that. We have $100,000 that is owed by approximately 40 individuals, so there's somewhat of a disregard for our ordinances. You know, we feel the city has a responsibility to enforce ordinances to ensure the properly parking function, and to do that, we need to, we feel we need to take this next step. So our proposed solution is to initiate a towing program. Towing is already allowed as part of our code. Normal does towing, we've had discussions with the town to do cater, they do towing. It's more of a deterrent, but we kind of have this initial phase that we need to get through, and there's a large volume associated with that. So- So what we need to do is we need to be able to amend our code to be able to process this, the due process via certified mail. We just don't have the police personnel or parking enforcement personnel to service them personally. So those targeted for towing will receive this notice via certified mail. And if we can't reach them that way, they'll be personally served. So this is in addition to the personal service. It's already allowed per our code. And we recognize that the city hasn't done a lot other than having our collections firm send out nasty grams, et cetera. So we want to work with our residents who have gotten into these positions. So we are reviewing and creating and having discussions internally between Finance Administration related to creating payment plans to kind of transition this process. So this is just the first step. We will be doing large official notices to the community, explaining when the start date will occur, letting the community know who to contact, what number to call, and where to get help with the services. So right now, I just recommend that we process this initial code change so that we can get our standard operating procedures in place and move forward with this one step at a time. And then we'll develop those communications and the payment plans, et cetera, for the community. So pause for any questions?
Questions? Councilmember Hendricks?
So if we approve this tonight, does that leave it then in your hands to figure out payment plans and we won't see it again? Or is that something that those payment plans and options are going to come back to us before any sort of punishment is given?
And so again, correct me if I'm wrong here, Scott, but so those payment plans will be worked out by staff. We're, we've had some meetings on it today. We've had other meetings. We know that some of these debts are rather large. We also know that we don't want to, you know, have people so that they can't have their car. So we are looking at setting up payment plans. We're looking at cutting out some of the penalties so that we can get this down to as reasonable of a level as we can. We need to catch up on some of the old debt so that we can start to truly enforce, so that it doesn't get into this situation again.
So that will just be handled internally?
Correct, at this point, yes.
Councilmember Danenberger?
Yeah, will there be an open bid process so that the other tow companies like Grounds or Wilks, Winx will be able to bid on this work? Or is this just going to be a default monopoly for Joe's again?
Yeah, we'll have to look at that. We do have a procurement process. I don't know if it would fall into the existing towing contract that we've got. But we'd have to, I'd have to look at that and give you a formal answer unless you know offhand, Scott.
The expectation currently amongst staff is that it would fall under that same agreement. So we'll have to discuss that.
Will that come up for vote for council, or will that just be an internal?
It'll be based on the contract term, so we'll go back and look at that contract. And if it's, if it's still in existence and it allows for towing of vehicles in these situations, then it would default to them. But if that contract's up or this isn't within the four corners of that contract, then we would have to do a new procurement and get new quotes and a new contract process. So we can, we can go back and look at that and get the answer to that.
Councilmember Bolin and Councilmember Ward?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember?
I'll second, but I have a question. A couple of questions. Do you know off the top of your head how much the largest violator owes?
The largest is approximately $7,000.
And what is, what is the, could you remind us maybe for the record what the penalty for, hang on, for a parking violation is?
So it's, the structure is it's $10 initial citation, then a $5 late penalty. I can't, I think that's after about two weeks. And then another $10 penalty after that. So it accumulates to $25 in city-related citation and penalty. And then once it was rolled to collections, there's a $13 collections fee. So the final citation amount is $38. So approximately 34% of the total is related to the collections fee.
But even if, if we were just totally being like round figures, we were saying the person, we were just setting it at $33, right? 25 plus the collection fee, no?
13.
30.
38.
Okay, we're still talking like 184 violations?
Yes.
Minimum unpaid for that $7,000. I mean, please don't quote me on, do the math yourself, okay? But we're talking like almost 200 violations by one person.
Yes.
Coming up to $7,000 with penalties.
Blatant disregard.
Yeah, I second the motion.
All right, sounds good. Looks like we have no other discussion, so.
Can I just add? So how many tickets will it take moving forward to be towed?
That, so our code allows us to tow people that owe literally five tickets. So five times 25 would be $125. So the town of Normal, I believe, we were checking with them and they said, you know, if they have really unpaid violations, they'll tow. So the, but the indication that we got through our parking enforcement manager was that they really don't have to tow because it's such a deterrent. Decatur was, I believe, $100 when Jeff and Billy and I spoke with them a couple of years ago, that their level is. So ours by code is 125.
Okay. And so this one is dealing specifically with those high-end individuals? Will we have future discussion for individuals that are not in this high-end category? Or will it just be across the board?
So this will apply to anybody that we're going to tow in the future, now or in the future, that we'd have, we'd be able to serve them by certified mail, I believe. Correct?
Right. This, this code change addresses a blanket policy, but as far as our transition to who we're going to be, I mean, it's going to take a while for us to get through the numbers of violators that we have. So I don't have a definitive answer for you, Councilmember Hendricks, on that.
Okay. Yeah, I've been very torn on this matter because I don't feel bad for the 7,000. I feel bad for the in-between individual, right? Five tickets. Yeah, you park for a day and now you're being towed the next time you come to downtown. Or if they just add up and you do forget to get back to them, I have forgotten to pay many bills. And then to be towed, and then to pay the fee to the city, and then also the towing company as well. And we've seen and I've heard repeatedly, parking enforcement has increased, you know, their surveillance and their watch and their ticketing. It's, I represent downtown and it's what I hear all the time. And so I'm very fearful of, again, not the 7,000 person, but the lady who goes to court, parks on the street, never been in downtown, court goes over, and now she's got three tickets. Or the person who goes anywhere, you know, in downtown and gets their haircut and colored, they're going to pay a ticket. It's just part of going downtown. And we are taking a step in the right direction with the next item, which is a recognition that 90 minutes isn't enough. But to punish people who parked and got the ticket because they were at the hair salon, and now moving forward, we're not going to, hopefully, they can get out in the two hours, and that's okay now. I just, I'm struggling with the balance of, yeah, we need to take care of the individuals who just don't care, while also understanding that it's also not creating the most inviting space for downtown to be like, welcome, parking that lot, towed. Parking that lot, towed. Park here for too long, towed. That gives me a lot of, a lot of pause.
Just one comment. This won't address maybe even half your concerns, but it's, you know, so people won't get five tickets and then be on the tow list. So, I mean, I mean, eventually, even if we were doing the, what our code allows, there's still that due process. There's a 10, I think it's 10 days, you know, you received your notice, you've signed for it. You're allowed, you have 10 days to contest the amount or make arrangements essentially to contact the city. So, you know, there's some allowance there for trying to, you know, figure it out. I know that doesn't address, you know, you're accidentally getting five tickets.
Just one other question. Will the city still be mailing like a list of the tickets that you have outstanding? I know that, I don't, I do know this from personal experience, you know, collections, they would send a list eventually, but they were tickets that my spouse got that I didn't realize. Hopefully he's not watching, that he got. And then by the time that it had gotten to our mailbox, which again is his fault, but by the time it got to our mailbox, it was already past the double late fee or whatever it was.
So there's, I don't know the, the auto-generated notices, you know, related, you get the first one, and then there's a auto-generated notice related to when it's going to be late. We, we are, this is under police, there's going to be a transition between fire, or fire, finance, I'm going, or police now. Because parking enforcement is part of the police department. But we've, we've kind of got a legal, finance, police collaborative team working on this right now. That statements, actual statements will be mailed out. We, the parking enforcement manager just ran 2,000 statements on Friday to get those out, kind of. We were talking about doing them quarterly, but we wanted to make sure we got them out related to this kind of notification. So there should be the auto-generated, you know, late notices, and then there'll also be the quarterly statements in case you're, you know, you're accumulating. You got two tickets and you don't, and you've forgotten about them. You get the statement to remind you, you know, of what your status is.
Thank you for the explanation. I'm going to respond to my colleague here. I ended up twice getting a ticket for doing, parking in the lot over here and doing city business. I paid the ticket. You know, so I, I would take it one step farther, and Billy heard me say this. I don't care if they lose their car. Give them a bus pass. Maybe they will learn that not to, you know, park illegally. I'm just kind of hardcore that way. I grew up in Chicago.
Well, thank you. Just for the record, I've never received a ticket ever in my life, just so everybody knows that. No, that's enough for today.
Right, you do have a motion on the floor from Bolin as seconded by Ward.
Okay, awesome. Okay, I think we're ready to vote.
That's all. Lance, can you push it forward? Thank you.
Okay. All right, so the motion passes and one nay to announce?
And it's Councilmember Hendricks.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. So we're going to move on to item eight C. And consideration and action on ordinance amending the Bloomington City Code, updating Chapter 21, increasing downtown parking time limits for 90 minutes to two hours on certain streets as requested by the Administration Department.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Hendricks?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bolin, and I think we have Finance Director Scott Rathbun?
Oh, they're already voting. But we had.
Well, my note said to call.
We had a city, a senior deputy city manager tie us on this one.
Okay, all right.
Really quickly, maybe. So part over the last probably year, we've been having conversations with downtown merchants about parking. It always comes up. We get it. One of the things that has come up particularly with restaurants and service provider, personal service providers, salons, tattoo artists, whatever, whatever, is related to perhaps extending the time limit from 90 minutes to two hours to help them to get their services provided within a window that worked for them. So that's what this is about. Have you take questions?
Awesome. Let's go ahead and vote. Everybody voted already? Okay, moving on. Thank you. This passes.
How it's passes.
Oh, okay. You guys are really confusing me with the colors here. All right. So now we're back to Mr. Rathbun for the Finance Director's report.
Intro? Okay, jumping right in. City Manager, Deputy City Managers, I guess there's just one this evening, Mayor, Council, August, so May, June, July, August, four months through, 25%. But it's kind of a similar storyline is last month, it's still early in the fiscal year, just two months of sales tax. But we're getting there, you know, as far as some things that we can take note of, and maybe some things, you know, we need to watch and get a general update for the city's finances. Next slide, please. So major tax revenues, you know, I went through the structure of this exhibit last month. You know, we've got the prior year, the changes in the budget. We took the budget up a lot from FY24, $10 million plus for these tax revenue categories. Most of them are trending. We have some flip-flopping on the year-to-date budget variance column. Last month, sales tax, home rule and state were slightly under year-to-date. This month, you know, we're over in state sales tax, about break even with home rule. So there's a lot of seasonality we use in our budgeting for those, those tax categories, especially related to the holidays, et cetera. So to have them deviate from month to month could be some timing issues. So those are trending well. The two items that are on our watch list that I mentioned last month are local motor fuel tax. We had another month where that category was under approximately $40,000. So we're $84,000 under year-to-date, which is three months in. So not knowing whether or not that's construction on Market Street, competition from the Loves on the north end of Normal there. So we're, we are watching that. And then replacement tax, kind of a long story. This is property replacement tax. It's kind of an income tax-related item. The Department of Revenue, Illinois State, was overfunding that over the prior few years. Now they're clawing back some of those dollars. A lot of it is supposed to be pushed into the local government distributive fund and kind of manifests itself in an income tax. So you can see our income tax is $195,000 over year-to-date. But PPRT replacement tax is under 396 almost. So they're not correlating evenly, you know, so we'll be watching that. Replacement tax, we only get eight payments a year. It's kind of weird. So one large payment under year-to, our budget assumptions can kind of skew our reporting early in the fiscal year. But we are watching that. Otherwise, revenues are trending fairly closely. Next slide, please. So the general fund, our largest fund, you know, budget was originally 130 million or so. It's 149 million in total revenues. No material changes from last month on this exhibit. I just want to highlight again the way we structure our budget reporting. The revised budget column shows $14.7 million in use of reserves. And you can see in the projected year-end, which is essentially just our, our budget numbers at this point, we're not changing those projections yet. We don't have any revenues for use of reserves because they're not real revenue. So, you know, that's why that's a zero. So we kind of, we plug the budget or we balance the budget, use the word plug, with reserves. So if everything came in just as budgeted, we'd end up with a $14.7 million, essentially kind of like loss for the fiscal year for the general fund. Next slide, please. Expendures, expenditures, excuse me, same comment, no material changes from last month. You can see that salary and benefits is somewhat ahead of the annualized trend. But that's because we kind of front-load with some of our parks expenditures. The other change here is the FY25 audited beginning fund balance. Last month, we were showing 50 million, so it's adjusted down just slightly. The audit is still going on. It's going to be finalized probably this, in September here. Statutorily, we have to have it completed by the end of October. So it came down just a slight bit, but still, all things being held equal, at the end of FY25, we'd have $35.6 million roughly in reserves. Next slide, please. This is our really high-level enterprise fund summary exhibit. I highlighted last month, and I want to kind of talk about it right now because of the reimbursement ordinance that came up. So you can see for water, we started the year with about $4.8 million in reserves. We've got commitments in the form of POs of 14.3 million. So that year-to-date, you know, showing that 14.3 million loss, ending reserves. you know, showing that 14.3 million loss, ending reserve of 9.5 million, negative. So that's where we're going to borrow this year to accommodate those use of reserves. POs, we haven't paid for those yet, so there's a, there's a big kind of, uh, tail on that water, uh, tower, uh, project, so not all $14 million is going to go out the door this fiscal year, but we will be borrowing, um, sometime during, uh, the year to accommodate, and that will adjust the way that ending the reserve balance looks. Next slide, please. Uh, so this month, we're, we're highlighting the arena fund. The arena fund i- is a little confusing. Um, we have two divisions in the arena fund. We have the facilities, the building basically, and then the entertainment division. And typically, we'll report that the fund in total, and then we show the entertainment division, um, because there's just a lot of interest in the finances for that. And just like the general fund, um, you know, it's early in the year, especially related to the entertainment side, and we'll see that exhibit here in just in a minute, um, but there's a lot of fixed costs, you know, that we have in this fund, um, you know, utilities, staff, and we're really just kind of moving into, um, the, the main portion of the year related to events at the arena. So you're going to see a little lag and some, some higher losses here as we go into it. But just kind of going through the, the, um, the funding, um, sources for the fund, funding sources for the fund, um, you can see in the far-left column, we have about $300,000 in use of reserves planned, uh, there's taxes, so there's a, part of our home rule taxes go into the arena to cover the bond payments. And it's kind of interesting, we have a, a debt service fund, so down at the bottom on transfers out in the notes section, you can see that we show 1.939440 is to bond fund for debt service payments. So it's really a wash in the fund, we put in $1.9 million in home rule sales tax, and it goes back out in the form of debt payments. Um, the charges for services, that's a roll-up from the entertainment division, 4.5 million, investment income related to interest earnings on the reserves, and then we have a $2 million transfer in from the general fund. So a subsidy, this fund always needs subsidies. So we have a couple of funds, um, that typically need foot subsidies every year, some of them vary, like golf varies depending on the, um, the capital needs, uh, but the arena fund has always needed a reserve to help with the facility expenditures, and there's been a loss budgeted for the entertainment side as well. Uh, moving into the expenditures, um, we have a, an FTE on the facility side that's a maintenance person, but the, the rest of the, uh, compensation is for the entertainment division. And contractuals, commodities, you can see over on the right, you know, we have some larger expenses, budgets, talent fees, et cetera. But kind of wrapping this, um, this exhibit into, uh, a tighter framework, our funding sources, um, coming into the facility side are really the $2 million transfer in, um, well, not just the facility side, to the fund, 2 million, and then 300,000, so that's about 2.3 million. So where's the money going? Um, we have facility maintenance expenses, these are in the details, you can't see this in the exhibit, but of a half million. We have equipment purchases this year of 1.5 million, that is showing the capital expenditures there. Um, one big item is the replacement of the ribbon boards at 750,000. Um, we have debt payments, you can see those in principal, this isn't the debt for the bond, this is lease expenditures for, um, for equipment of the 210,000 and then 10,000 and, ex, principal and interest. So that's 220,000, and then the entertainment division has a loss budgeted for the year of 139,000. So all those add up to 2.3 million. So we're funding basically facility maintenance, equipment purchases, the, the lease expense and the loss in the entertainment side with the 2.3 million dollars. So 2 million, million-dollar subsidy, and then the $300,000 use of reserves. And that is not including the taxes that post there for the debt payments. Next slide, please. So th- this is a pretty high-level snapshot, it doesn't show all the details on, um, what kind of revenue sources we have budgeted for, uh, the entertainment division. But again, I'm going to reiterate the fixed costs, um, that are in this division, um, kind of front-loaded, related to the, uh, events occurring later. So you can see that, you know, the 4.5 million in, in this exhibit, this is just kind of a subset of the whole fund, so we're not showing, uh, a balancing of this budget with the reserves. Um, so we have a 4.5 million dollar revenues total and a 4.65 expense total for a budgeted loss of 139,000. And then year-to-date, um, we're showing about a half-million-dollar deficit before encumbrances. And then, uh, want to comment that our encumbrances are, a lot of those are related to POs for guarantees on, on upcoming events, so we're showing those, but any revenues, like deposits for tickets that have come in ahead of time, we defer those, so those aren't showing. So we kind of, for this entertainment division, we kind of need to ignore those encumbrances because they're pending, where there's no revenue offset right now. So, um, moving back up to charges for services, you know, that's, I put, we have event-related revenue, but that's also, uh, suites and naming rights, you know, some, some other revenue sources we're hoping to come in specifically related, you know, to the, um, the, having the hockey team be a part of, um, the arena. And then you can see, um, with the expenditures, we do have some FTEs, uh, we utilize seasonals, uh, the contractuals, a big component of that is artist fees, uh, commodities includes cost of goods sold for concessions, you know, all our food, beverages, and utilities. The utilities, a significant portion of the fund. Uh, right now, all the utilities are being posted to the entertainment side, and that's the way we've done it historically, so we continue to do that. So, um, that's, that's kind of a high level, it's early in the year, related to, um, reviewing the financials for the entertainment division, and we come back around to this in a few months, um, that'll be fleshed out a little bit more when we're, you know, more in the, in the midst of the, um, the event season for the arena. And, um, I typically don't do this, but I was going to check with Billy to see if he had any other comments he wanted to make, uh, related to the arena fund.
Only to reiterate what you said about the fact that summer season is not typically the season for arena facilities. That's when outdoor festivals are very po- uh, popular, and not so much the indoor events. Um, we, we had some events during the summer, but they were graduations, and then we had the, uh, Jehovah Witness event, which aren't typically revenue, they're not ju- revenue generators, and so summer's not the season for that type of thing, it's really fall when it turned into spring.
Is it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much, Scott. Any questions? Councilor Mundy?
So to account for that seasonality, I guess, and the signaling there, um, what, what were the financial results for the prior, um, fiscal year? Budget year?
So they, they weren't that great, I, we, we were over a million-dollar loss for the arena. Um, we had over a half-million dollars in revenue categories that were not realized. So there was the naming rights, I think it was, um, 300,000, um, no suite revenue, so we were in a big transition years, but there was, that was a big driver of that loss.
And does that loss also include the, uh, debt service?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't, that, I'm just, I'm just speaking to.
The operating loss?
The entertainment division side of things, yeah. The, the facility side, there's, there's typically a, uh, maintenance overall subsidy need of between a half-million to a million dollars annually related to maintenance, depending on the needs of the, of the facility.
And then reflecting back, you know, over the, um, it's been roughly 20 years that we've owned the Coliseum, is, is that correct?
It wasn't here, was it 2009?
2006, isn't it?
Six.
Yeah, 2006.
So almost 20.
Almost 20. Um, and the original purchase was in the upper 30 million range? And I'm just trying to get a flavor of, from that point to now, um, how much we pay, have paid in debt service, um, as opposed to principal, given the principal balance remains at 21.5 million, I think, or somewhere in that ballpark.
Unfortunately, the exhibit I brought does not have the historical payments, so, uh, noted on your, you know, your, your comments about doing a, a debt review, and I could talk about that with administration, um, and doing an overall debt review and, and coming more prepared to show the historical, um, table for this. I know, um, it was refinanced, you know, these bonds are showing, uh, they were refunded in 2014. Um, since I've been here, anytime we've refinanced a, a bond, we, we do not extend the maturity, if not, we, you know, we try to actually maybe shorten it if we can, so I'm not sure if the, the maturity was extended that time or not.
Okay. One of the things that I'm trying to educate myself over is, as we talk about paying cash for things and things of that nature that we've all, um, supported as positives, um, what is the relative, uh, opportunity cost for not using that same, um, enthusiasm to pay down our debt? Um, so that's really what I'm trying to get an understanding of, just to really have a better grounding in what our true cost of running the city is, agnostic of the debt service, so that we can kind of see those two things, um, you know, beside one another and, and help us make better decisions, um, with both of those things in context. Thank you so much.
Sure, understood.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Scott. I think we are going to City Manager's Discussion next.
Thank you again, uh, Mayor and Council. Just for a short, quick, at the public comment, we had, uh, some gratitude shared on the park playground equipment, really do appreciate that. Um, the gentleman referenced, uh, thanking Jeff, that was actually Jeff Henman, our, uh, Superintendent of Park Maintenance, him and Dave Lamb, our Assistant Parks Director, uh, do a great job, they really work with the community along with our Parks Director, Eric Veal, so just wanted to give a quick shout-out to Parks and, and really do appreciate the hard work that they've done, not only with the school, but we're going out there meeting with lots of different organizations and seeing where we can collaborate, so really appreciate that. And then also, I don't have a slide on this, but, uh, our clerk, Leslie Yulkin, is going to be bringing forward an initiative in the next, uh, couple of meetings to realign our, our, uh, licenses and permits to be on the calendar year, and so that'll be something that'll be coming forward. Uh, just want to start to publicly talk about that and give some notice that we are going to be talking about that, um, but again, that'll be in the next couple of meetings. Go to the next slide. Uh, first, wanted to share that on, uh, September 12th, 2024, 254 individuals graduated from the FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia. Only approximately 1% of all law enforcement officers are accepted to attend this training. It involves 10 weeks of advanced communication, leadership, and fitness training, and our very own Assistant Police Chief Chad Wamsley was a graduate on September 12th. Uh, a lot of you already know Chad, he's done a great job, he's been with the city for a long time, and, uh, really is a, a big asset to the Bloomington Police Department, so we're very proud of that accomplishment, wanted to share that with the Council and the community tonight. Next slide. Another exciting thing, uh, they actually provided me the exact time of day this morning that we received our Vector truck. Our Water Department is extremely excited about this, and so are we, um, but this, this Factor truck is, they got training on it, they're putting, starting to put it in use, it's going to help us eliminate the unknowns that we have in our inventory amongst doing some other operations. So again, we're, we're, as, as, uh, Finance Director Scott Rathbun talked about, we're going to be spending a lot of money in water, a lot of it's mandated and required, and we're updating our infrastructure, and, uh, we are in the process of doing those projects and doing that work, and this is just one more example of that. Next slide. Bulk pickup is getting ready to start, October 7th through October 18th. You can get more information at BloomingtonIllinois.gov/solidwaste, you can get the schedules, all kinds of information and, and other things at that website, and if you have questions, there's obviously phone numbers you can, you can contact as well. But again, bulk pick, bulk pickup will start, uh, soon here, October 7th. And then, is that, am I reading that right? Yeah, October 7th. Um, and then the last two slides, I'm actually going to turn it back over to, um, Senior Deputy City Manager Billy Tyus to finish us out.
Thank you. A couple of things I just wanted to touch on quickly is, is I would be remiss if I didn't talk about the magnitude of some of the artists we're actually getting in this community now, which is a marked difference from what we've seen in past years. Um, and I don't know that everybody realizes that. The other thing I wanted to mention intentionally is the fact that we have often heard, can you please bring in a diversity of shows in a lot of different ways? And that's happening. Um, we've hear a lot of people that say, hey, country sells well, why do you, but why do you only bring country? And so I wanted to talk about the fact that we're not just bringing country. Country's great, it is, but we're not just bringing country. Because first of all, with Marlon Wayans, and this show didn't sell great, but I, I wanted to mention that Marlon Wayans is a huge name in the entertainment industry, it's from the legendary Wayans family, from In Living Color lore. He wrote the scary movie, movies, which did like $400 million at the box office. Um, and like I said, In Living Color and Above the Rim, and he's currently on Bel-Air, which is being produced by Will Smith, and so he's a big name, has been around for a while, and my wife and I did go to the show, and it was fantastic. It was long and we were sleepy, but it was a great, it was a great show to be a part of, and so Marlon Wayans is, is a huge name in the industry. Next slide, please. And Kevin Gates, um, really, really big name in the rap, um, world, uh, for those who are fans of, of rap music. This was a half-house show, but it was a couple hundred tickets short of a sellout for that show, so, which is a very, very big deal. Kevin Gates has six billion with a B Spotify streams, um, he's got 11 million Instagram followers, nine and a half million Facebook followers, and 14 platinum songs. So my point in all of that is that these are big names, they're different types of shows, so we're trying to get a diversity of, of shows in the building in a lot of different ways. It really, it just goes to, you know, it was a big weekend in Bloomington, in the downtown area, and that's becoming a regular occurrence, honestly. You know, we had these shows, we had the Cleverly's at the BCPA, we had the Farmer's Market, we had the Festival of Joy, et cetera, et cetera, and that's, that's driving people to the events, but it's also driving people to restaurants and shops and stores. And so I think Melissa said at the last meeting, we've seen 2 million people in the downtown this year so far, um, and so that's a big deal. Just wanted to take time to, to mention that. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you very much. Okay, that's it, okay. The only thing that I want to mention is that, uh, September 30th, uh, 10 a.m., we'll be, uh, ribbon cutting for the, uh, Ferro Kinda Bueno line, um, so it should be, uh, exciting, another exciting development in the life of Ferro in Bloomington. Any other comments from Councilmembers? Councilmember Crumpler?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a, a couple of things, um, just FYI, uh, for the Council and the community, um, Marty Hickman has been appointed interim, um, CEO of the Bloomington Normal Convention Bureau, which I sit on, um, that committee is composed of both, um, members of the town of Normal and, um, representatives from the city, and we look at how to bring more diverse, you know, um, acts and venues to this community. It's a really exciting committee to sit on because you get to see, you know, what possibilities are out there, you know, that's to really bring the kinds of acts and music that this community really wants. There will be, there will be a national search for a permanent director, and both Anthony Nelson and myself will be sitting on that committee, um, to represent the city, so we'll hopefully get somebody really talented. And then finally, um, last Thursday, I went on the neighborhood walk, um, with Chief Simmington, it was a warm day, but we were out there knocking on doors. What was really cool was about a year ago, the neighborhood residents, this was in Clear, near Clearwater Park, the neighborhood residents met and wanted increased lighting in their park, um, they were very concerned about activities, undesirable activities that were happening in the park. That lighting was installed, and almost every door we went to, they commented on how much better the lighting was and what a difference it made, and so this was a success for the city, I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, seeing no other, uh, lights on, so I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Hendricks, and then a second by Councilmember Bowden, was in favor saying five by saying aye. Aye, we are adjourned, thank you. See you in a... Three weeks? Yeah?
No. No. Yeah.